It is six, call meeting order, open and pledge allegiance please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I don't have an activity report, the holidays have been in the way of any meeting. Does anybody have anything to report? You do Neil.
Last week we, let's do it with Lance Lewis, editor at his facility and talked a little bit of what he wants to do down the road.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I was there with Neil.
Wow.
In the EDAP.
Travel in pairs. Safe. All right, then we have some department head reports and we'll take these in the order of importance, starting with the most important, Mr. Ludwig.
Thank you. Sales are projecting out very nice, it looks like we're going to hit about 1.95 million for the year before taxes, so we're still holding at that 28% above last year. Have seen an increase, obviously as of the bars have shut down again, so it's been a great Christmas holiday, sales were fantastic, especially where it ends on a Friday. Our customer count is projecting we should be over about 70,000 customers this year, which is up 20% or 11,000 customers from last year, so following very nicely. Along with our customers, we have almost 1,100 people on our rewards program, so that has gone fantastic. People are really enjoying the benefits of the rewards program. We do different items, like during our wine sale, we did double points and people really took advantage of that. We are in the final stages of doing our audits and counts. We've found a few hiccups here and there that we've called with Wright. I've also worked with Ryan from Schlatter and Winter, we've talked again today, just trying to see where we are at, so we'll have those final numbers hopefully by the end of, you know, next month. Ryan does come in and do a final count Saturday with me between 9:00 and 12:00, he'll be there. We also policies, no, we met with Roger Teal to discuss the possibility of extending our lease, we will continue that conversation after the first of the year, it sounds like. And one last item, we, with our New Year's Eve holiday and New Year's Day, we'll be open 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM on New Year's Eve and New Year's Day will be open 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And that's my report.
All right, thank you, questions? All right, moving down the food chain, Ron.
All right, thank you. First of all, the ice skating rink up at the township hall is in operation, the warming house will open tomorrow. That is between the fire hall and the hockey association, who does take care of that up there. Christmas tree drop-off again is over at the fire hall until January the 12th, just a reminder to clean the sidewalks. One item I know I reported on before, but unused wells, the word is getting out there, I did have three private individuals come forward and one of them has already been sealed. And then lastly, the EPA has finally revised deed lead and copper rule, it's been around for at least 20 years now. The action level was at 15 parts per billion, it is going to go to 10. They're going to go from a first draw sample to a fifth liter sample though. And one of the biggest things, it's actually not going to affect us because we've already got it done, and that is the, every community will have to identify all their service lines, construction material, they're looking for the lead copper or lead lines. The last one that we had, I think, was removed about 10, 12 years ago. Ours are all either copper or plastic at this time. And then also the schools will have to sample for initial five years of running, so that's all I have.
All right, it sounds like fun, and questions for Ron? No?
All right, well, the day after the last council meeting and per the discussion we had on setting up an ad hoc counter or kiosk here, the team set that up the day after and from what I've seen, from what I've heard, the feedback has been going quite well and it's been helping out with the efficiency issue and speeding up the lines. That was going well. I also met with the Coronas Lake Association, just an introduction, see what they do, see what they've done in the past with the city, and they indicated their willingness to try to find ways for us to collaborate, so we're going to have a meeting in January to see what we can do in the coming months. And also I've been continuing to meet with some of the business leaders in town and not only talk about their successes and, you know, how they've grown over the past years, but also talk about some of the challenges they're facing. And what I plan on doing is preparing a short summary or summary of all of these, you know, obviously positives and negatives and concerns, et cetera, and present it to the council at the next meeting. That's it.
Hmm, weren't your TV starting on too?
What is it?
Was your TV starting on?
Oh yeah, I also appeared on Talk of Painesville last week and it was fun, it was a nice interview and a nice young man, so I don't know if anybody here saw it, but it was very well done.
All right, thank you. Then we have, any questions for Eric? All right, then we have before us the consent agenda, the minutes of those two EDAP board meetings, the Public Works Board meeting and the city council meeting, and then the vouchers from our update here totaling $489,694.27. And item H on a new business, we do not have to discuss that at a specific time because we're not going to do that Zoom, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll just move right on through as we go. That's the consent agenda.
Motion to accept. Neil can have it.
Oh, you're so.
Merry Christmas Neil.
Benevolent there, yes, okay. Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Rinkie.
Sure.
All right. Approve the consent agenda discussion, all favor I?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. All right, then the first item is the 2021 cigarette licenses on page two, they're listed there.
I will move to approve the cigarette licenses for 2021 for the applicants listed on the action sheet and the agenda.
Second. Okay, motion by Rinkie, seconded by Gilmore to approve those cigarette license applications as detailed on page two of the agenda discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, and that carried. And then the next item B is looking to approve the consulting services for next year for the city and Madden Gallanter Hansen LLP. Our labor attorney.
I'll make a motion to approve the consulting services contract between the City of Painesville and Madden Gallanter Hansen LLP for 2021.
Second. Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Rinkie to approve that services contract discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. And the next item, item C, industrial park drainage study, Chuck or Ron?
Okay, I guess I'll start. We have two businesses over in the industrial park that are looking to do some future planning. Just when these lots were initially developed, I think we all know well, there was no such regulation under stormwater. Obviously today there is and it's a very important part of it. Yes, we went and looked at it and thought it'd be better, you know, there's also more lots out there that could have this issue down the road, so to try and do a regional pond would make a lot of sense. This went through the public works, they did recommend it, we did ask Chuck to put a little letter together there and to go through it would be $10,200. And, you know, there's quite a number of different options, we can stay smaller, we can go to the regional end of it. We did start a, again, stormwater utility fund for purposes like this, which I believe it's got right around at 50,000, and so we do have plenty of money to cover this.
Any add or?
No, I think that covers it really well, you know, as we started to look at these two particular properties, it became pretty apparent that there's some other drainage issues that if we're going to look at it, we should look at it sort of comprehensively, not just focus on those two individual businesses.
Right now, most of this drainage is ending up directly in the river, correct?
That is correct, it all drains directly.
So anything we do will be an improvement if we. With that, I'll make the motion to approve the industrial park stormwater study in the amount of 10,200, with funds to come from the stormwater utility fund.
Second. Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to approve industrial park stormwater study in the amount of $10,200 with funds to come from the stormwater utility fund, any other discussion? If not, all favor I?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. I do remember when quality check was there and they had all that plastic that was going.
Heading down towards the river?
Heading down towards the river. Mm-hmm. All right, thank you. On to next item, item dealing with well number seven, Ron?
Okay, I've talked about this for some time, but we'd like to install a variable frequency drive unit in well number seven. The capacity on the well is 650 or 700 gallons a minute right in that vicinity and it's operated at 450, so for the last number of years, we've always just pinched the valve down. I guess what makes this viable at this time is Excel Energy currently has a rebate program of $1,600 available on a rebate. Also, the savings would also be one cent per kilowatt estimated and about $50, $60 a month savings on our demand charge. Total estimated savings per year would be about that $1,320, so we're looking roughly at a nine to 10-year payback on this with the $1,600 rebate. Funds for this would have to come out of the Water CIP. Again, this did go through the public works and they have recommended it.
Ron, on those two quotes, you got one from Automatic System for seven, oh, is it $107? Is there any reason why, are they any better than electric pump? I mean, $100 is a pretty narrow margin.
I guess we've worked with both vendors in the past and they're both very good.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to approve the quote from electric pump in the amount of $14,551 with funds to come from the Water CIP fund.
Second. Motion by Gilmore, seconded by LeBeau to approve the quote from electric pump in the amount of $14,551 with funds to come from the Water CIP fund, discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. All right, now we have an EDA item here and looking at a couple changes to the joint powers EDA agreement there, and I don't know who's going to, somebody going to give a report here, Sean?
Just EDAP has been talking about this, we discussed it at a couple of different meetings. The original contract, which had the $3,000 contribution from the township, was quite old and never updated, so in talking with Belinda and Jennifer, we realized just how much time city staff had been putting into it and felt that 3,500 was a more accurate contribution for the township share. And then the board makeup was modified a little bit to include that we'd really like somebody from the Chamber of Commerce board on there as well to provide a voice for those individuals. So with that, I will move to approve the amendment to the joint powers economic development agreement between the City of Painesville and Painesville Township.
Second. Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Gilmore to approve the amendment to joint powers economic development agreement between the City of Painesville and Painesville Township, discussion. Just a note that we're kind of going back to the way it started out because the chamber was a one-third participant in our original.
New way.
EDA. Anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. And, yeah, we're losing a council member. Ron has submitted his resignation.
Effective today?
January 3rd. January 3rd.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation, Sean Rinkie, council member, effective January 3rd, 2021.
Second. All abstain. Motion by Gilmore, seconded by LeBeau, and I'm not surprised that Gilmore made the motion there. Do we accept the resignation, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. All right, then, now, since you just submitted your resignation, you can give a verbal report on the counter, read.
Yeah, so a couple of meetings ago, we talked about disbanding this committee and I suggested that we not because we should wait for Tarek to come onboard, and that was really just so that I could sneak this item on the agenda. Mr. Mayor, you've been in some leadership capacity with the city since almost when I was born.
Yeah, no. What do you like, 16? No.
Well, if you look by my face, 12.
Yeah.
And really, you know, I think it was a couple of years ago when the discussion was brought up about raising council salaries, somebody said, "We're not in this for the money." And I think the fact that you've shown 31, 32 years of dedication to the city, really with minimal financial support, really shows a dedication. And you've done so in a leadership capacity that's brought a sense of collaboration to the city. We work together, really you have the best interests of the city at heart. So we did, I spoke with the council members individually, not together, about what we can do to honor your contributions to the city and really thank you for your many years of hard work and dedication. So really, a simple small gift didn't feel adequate, although I have one here for you as well, but we thought that really we need something more permanent. So with that, there is a motion with this, and I do hereby move that we rename this room here the Jeff Thompson Council Chamber in honor and recognition of your years of service.
Second.
So. I'll call the question.
Yes. I'm trying to think something to come back with.
Just a thing.
Probably tear this building down in a short time.
We'll put it on a bathroom.
Jeff, can we maybe get a picture of you holding the flag for Facebook and the website and?
Sure. Later?
Sure.
Okay. All right, well, the question has been called and the motion was by Rinkie, seconded by Gilmore, okay. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'll abstain, but thank you very much.
Well, pass this down, and then we also have. This one is for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll have to come back and see.
All right, well, that was a surprise, thank you very much. On to.
Now, are we going to disband?
Oh yes, now I will move to disband the ad hoc. Okay. Okay, now, motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau to disband the ad hoc front counter board, and discussion on that.
It's about time.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. All right. On to item H, Lewis Expansion, and Tarek will give us an update on that.
Yeah, we were initially approached by Lewis Industries to support their initiative or expansion, they're applying for, under Minnesota Deed, which is the Department of Employment and Economic Development, Job Creation Fund is one of their programs, and it requires them to hire a certain number of employees, in return, they get a credit per employee hired above a certain hourly wage. The application is ongoing, the requirement that, or one of the main requirements for this, for them to get this grant money, is for the city to approve a resolution in support of it. There's no cost to the city, but the city must approve it or show support for it. I did send Bill Spooner a draft of the deed template that was sent over to me, and I was in contact with the people from deed to have a further discussion on it. And also, as Neil mentioned, that Neil and Ron and Sean and I went to have a tour of their facility to see what they're talking about and what they plan on doing. Bottom line is, they were hoping that they would be ready for the application to submit by this time and we would have a discussion with Lance Lewis to kind of prepare for this resolution. However, he called me today and he said that deed has given him some more requirements for the application and it's going to be pushed back a bit, so we'll probably present it at the next meeting, but for now, you know, the information that he wanted me to share is that he doesn't want this, you know, to be brought forward, he is going to be applying for this, but in addition to applying for this, because of the expansion they're doing and the investment they're willing to make in Painesville versus going to another state, as he mentioned, is they'll probably be looking for or requesting some sort of tax abatement, which they would like to have discussed with the city, and, you know, because they already have TIF, they cannot apply for another TIF. So the only other kind of support they can get would be in the form of tax abatement. So in addition to the job creation fund grant, which the city just needs to support it in the form of resolution, he will also be requesting at some point, probably beginning sometime next month or the month after, some type of discussion on tax abatement.
All right, we'll be looking forward to that, and any questions to Tarek?
Well, one of the things that deed had said was that we should look at if there's any preliminary things that have to be done, variances, things like that, is this, is part of this, the expansion building that's talked about with the water planning, or is it?
Yeah, it's related to this, there are two other things that are related to this, and Ron can speak in more detail about it. One is this drainage issue that they're, and of course, the land that it's on is theirs, but it's part of their land, the other company wants to expand as well, and they don't have any space for any drainage. So I think the issue is shared by two companies. The other issue is the former railroad tracks, and you can probably give an update on that more to what's happened, but as far as I know, it's in discussion so far.
Yes, the old rail bed that we used to have in there initially when the industrial park was developed, I think that was removed about 20 years ago. The easement, or it was actually plotted, I believe, as an outlot, that still remains today, part of it on the north side of Mini Street has been taken care of, this is still active, and I believe, I know Lance is working on it. As far as I understand, and maybe Bill, you can back us up, it is a, it's not a city issue, it's more of a private business issue, Bill, is that correct?
Yeah, the outlot, I believe, is still owned by the Ampe family that plotted that property initially, and so they have to go back and figure that out, but yeah, so.
Well, yeah, those two issues will be resolved, I think that will have to happen first or on the big top.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, that spur, that's basically just trees and brush and whatever now, right?
That's all it is, trees and shrubs, and some of the businesses are utilizing it as their own already. It just makes sense that it would be taken care of.
Okay, anything else on that? No action needed on that, so then we'll move on to old business, item A, personnel policies, and this has been tabled from before, waiting for a response back from our union representatives and attorneys on that, and Sean, are you giving a report, or?
Well, Jennifer told me just before we started that she heard back from union and labor, who both approve of this. Just a little bit of history, it's my understanding that this is revising the personnel policies is something that our past administrator said she started back in 2012, and we, as policies and procedures, sort of made it our goal to make sure that that actually got done this year. These policies were based off of a template from the League of Minnesota Cities. Jennifer spent a lot of time culling through that template, putting together our language in there, looking at the union contracts, labor reviewed it. This includes a couple of policies that are new to the city, that policies had discussed and previously approved, so now everything will just be up to date and can be more readily updated going forward. I would move the personnel policies, the exact language being effective January 1st, 2021.
Second. Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Gilmore, noise by somebody to approve the personnel policies effective January 1st, 2021, as presented in the agenda discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. And the street project, the AMPI project, not street, that's coming up. Chuck?
Yes, just a quick update, the AMPI project is substantially complete, there are just a couple of punchable items that we want to make sure to finalize before we close that project down. So we did contact deed, because we do have a deed grant for that project, and we contacted them to request an extension on a grant, so in your packet is a copy of that signed extension that basically gives us additional time to make sure everything's finalized and complete before we finalize that contract with the contractor, so. Any questions on that?
No, I guess not, then we can move on to the 2019 street project.
Yeah, the 2019 project is essentially complete, the contractor completed the alley work this fall, so that work's been completed in addition, so in your work that was completed last year is also, they did some reseeding this fall as well, so in your packet is a copy of pay request number 12, which essentially covers the work from the alleys as well as reduces the retainage that we're holding on the project down to 1%, and that amounts to $251,584.79.
I'll make the motion to approve payment estimate number 12, payable to Voss Plumbing and Heating and Paints in the amount of $251,584.79.
Second. Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Rinkie to approve payment estimate number 12, payable to Voss Plumbing and Heating and Paints in the amount of $251,584.79, discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. And the last action item here on page 110 is the 2021 budget, and we do have a little bit of correction to take care of there, and.
This was the resolution adopting the city budget, the numbers themselves, and unfortunately, trying to work from home, it did not save, I was having a little trouble getting kicked out of the internet with this, and I do apologize, I did not catch that. So it's just basically the 2020 numbers were in there instead of the 2021.
We'll blame the internet.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve the corrected resolution 2020-26, adopting the 2021 city budget.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie to approve. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie to approve corrected resolution 2020-26, adopting the 2021 city budget. Discussion on that. All in favor, I?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried. Any other things? Information, whether we have the West Central Sanitation Report for the month, the MediaCom rate adjustments, which we periodically give, and the meeting schedules coming up for January and February. And with that, thank you. I'll go. Gilmore and LeBeau and the rest.
Me? 30 minutes.
30 minutes. Yep, 30 minutes.
That's what I was saying.
Wait, you have a bet going?
You're leaving it, huh?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.